Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Bye-bye. You, too. Okay. All right, and then there were three.
It's better than none.
Okay. Moving right along. Steve, I guess you're up, superintendent's comments?
Sure. Just two quick things. First thing is, the ESIP project's going great. When you get a chance on your way out, public, board members take a walk through the gym. The new lighting is actually being installed right now. They won't leave until it's done tonight because we don't want to kick basketball out another day. But the difference in the light level, even before the new lighting, before the additional lights are installed, was night and day. So if you see it when it's just with the existing fixtures have been changed, now they're on the perimeter, they're installing new fixtures. It's a big difference. And our winter sports kicked off. And I see our kids practicing every day and running around the hallways here. And their first game, I think, is tomorrow, our girls' basketball and boys' basketball. And I think wrestling's Friday for their first day. That's it.
Dr. Collins, you're up.
We had our first meeting with all of our Battle of the Books teams. We have 53 student teams comprised of 260 students. So it's voluntary, but that's just about half of the school signed up to be on a team, which means that they're reading 20 books and preparing for our battles, which will be in the spring. So we meet every, about every two weeks and just kind of update and practice. But it's a really great turnout. It's the first year we have done this program. And to have half the school sign up to be on a reading team is really exciting. And this concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Damaris, any business administrator comments tonight?
Just one comment we received today. The lab testing program reimbursement form. Reimbursement form. However, Dendel does not qualify for the reimbursement because these reimbursements are solely for the course of sample collection and tests for the lab. Anything that was done after the effective day of July 13, 2016. Unfortunately, Dendel did all the testing between March and April. And we pay for those expenses. We did incur other expenses beside the lab testing. However, those expenditures do not qualify for reimbursement.
Okay, and so again, just to be clear, also for the public, because we decided as a group to do the testing early, before there was a clear mandate?
Correct.
Right.
Unfortunately, that's what the NJA 6A legislation...
That was the way they interpreted the regulation, is that what I remember?
Yeah, can you send that to the board?
Absolutely.
Because my understanding is there's some...
They interpreted it in a certain way.
Yes, exactly. There's an interpretation and there's some open windows. So my inclination would be to say, I don't care whether we get denied. I'd rather send in for it. But if we can take a look at it...
I started filling out the application today and there was a block. I couldn't continue because they actually request invoices after July 13 for lab testing and lab results, which we do not have.
Is that through the Department of Education?
Exactly, yes.
That's why. Because the Department of Education is interpreting it wrong. I'd like to go to, figure out what we can do to go to legislature to figure that out. Because my understanding is the legislature believes they wrote it differently, which...
I'll forward you this email.
The way it's set up right now, like the system, would be that we would have to certify it as true, but it wouldn't be true. So I wouldn't be able to do that.
You wouldn't be able to submit it.
Right. So if we can go another backdoor somewhere about how you can maybe go to the legislature or, you know, just fill it out and send it to the county. But as it is right now, I wouldn't be able to certify it as true because it's not.
It really comes down to the difference between how DOE interpreted what the law was written. They came up with those limits.
Yeah, somehow they got this date of July 13.
Which is not in the statute, my understanding. They're interpreting it the way they want to interpret it, which is not the way... We can talk about it afterwards, sorry.
Okay. That's good.
But thank you for looking into it.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Damaris, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It is 7:51. We will open up for public comments. Any issues at all, germane to the district? You just need to go to the podium and announce your name and address for the record. Anything at all? Okay. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public session at 7:52 PM. And we will move into our old business portion of the meeting. Mr. Anderson, would you care to walk us through these items?
Sure. If there are no objections, I'd like to move A, B, and C as a block, including our typical monthly reports. Ten minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cass.
Any... Do we have a chance to review these? We have our minutes? From the 10th and the 24th? Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I need to abstain on the work session meeting and executive session October 10 because I was not here.
Mrs. Deluna?
I am second. Would you like to...
Yes, it was. It was lean.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, but I abstained on the 24th.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I am, yes, abstaining on the...
Mr. Cass? Mr. Lapaloni is not here.
Yeah.
Mr. Capello?
I vote yes. But we have an issue, right? Because Mr. Lapaloni is not here with the abstentions, right? So we're going to have to, what, put it on again?
We have an issue.
The board members can vote on it if they're aware of what went on in the meeting by like, either watching the video or...
We can't vote on executives, though. Right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Can't approve the decision.
Do you want to put it on again, probably the next meeting?
I'll put it on again for the next meeting, hopefully.
Yeah.
And Lapaloni will be here.
Okay. And we'll make sure that we...
There's no issue with... Maybe we have to, so...
We have to approve it, so it has to go.
You can't finalize them until approved.
Right, so it's just, it's long, so we'll just wait.
Is there a window there?
Yeah, is there no, is there any kind of statutory regulatory window?
No, no.
Okay.
We like to post it on the website after it's approved. Hope, I mean, this one, we're going to have to hold.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold that and we'll see that again. Okay, all right. Moving on to new business. If there are no objections under personnel, I would like to move items 1 through 6 as a block.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. And it's a little... Okay, never mind. It's just broken up on the page. No, no, it's fine. No, it's fine. It's just thrown me.
Okay.
Okay, so again, we have personnel, retirement, the usual extra pay, resignations, and so on. This teacher at Valley View?
Yes.
What subject is it?
Special education.
Okay. I was asking about one, eh? Barbara, Barbara.
So, the last time when we had this on the work session, I asked, how long was she in the district? And when? She actually attended the CPAC meeting since then. It's 31 years she's been a teacher, 30 of them here in Dendel.
Wow.
She's very well respected.
I was going to say, I hope we can send her a letter of, you know, thanks for what we do.
Yeah, we usually did one after one.
She's been a wonderful teacher in the district for 30 years.
Well, we wish her good luck.
And I know the parents in CPAC that whose children had her are sorely going to miss her. As they told her that night.
I want to point out, we have the job, the clerical assistant, which we talked about at the work session. If there were any other questions or comments about that? No? Okay. Okay, if everybody's good. Oh, you saw, go ahead, Dave.
Is number four, is, when's the discussion? Did I miss the discussion for that when I was out on the 24th?
We discussed that on the, no, we discussed, was it the last meeting?
The last one, over the last meeting.
Yeah, that one.
The last meeting?
Yeah.
That would have been the 14th.
It would have been the 14th, actually.
Yeah.
You were here, Dave.
We discussed an executive. Yep. Yeah, you were definitely here.
I believe.
Do you need any clarification, Dave, or are you...
No, no, I think I'm okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't, this wasn't something we were going to discuss.
Okay, if there are no questions, comments, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to instruction and program. Mrs. Lindsay, would you care to take us through these?
Okay, so if no one has any objections, I would like to move us through motions 1 through 7 as a block, as listed on your agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. The only new one since we discussed this at the workshop, at the work session meeting, is the addition of, we're going to approve tonight to destroy old audio tapes from past board meetings. I think I saw someone ask for clarification how many years ago? I mean, we're not going to... Is it every audio tape we have?
We have audio tapes recorded from 1991 to 2010 that we are asking to destroy.
Okay, so I'm going to change the wording and ask that the board approve to destroy audio tapes from 2009... 1991 to 2010. Because between 2010 and 2000 and...
2010, 2011, there was some audio recording, but it's all downloaded through the computer.
They were digital. Okay.
Mr. Cass, you okay with that change?
Yes.
And so just from a point of information, I mean, we have to keep so many records. But the written transcripts that we approved, like the ones tonight that were held up on, is enough to have records of our meetings.
We can destroy your audio tapes after 45 days, as long as we have the approval.
So the minutes are all we need to do.
But our policy stays longer. Yeah, policy's three years, or if there's anything in litigation. But at this point, there's nothing that we know of in litigation. And it's all greater than three years in the past. So it meets our policy and the state, yeah.
I know, I thought I... So, and as of this time, also for clarification, tonight we're approving the district calendar, which is in alignment with the regional high schools' calendar. Are they approving theirs tonight also?
Is there a meeting tonight or tomorrow?
Their Monday also.
Mrs. Woody would know. Tonight, regional board is tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, their Monday next to it.
Okay, so...
He's sending me a copy of his calendar.
We're happy you're here with us.
We did create it together.
And we're happy with the wording at the bottom of it?
Yeah, I mean, there was a suggestion that I had made for that wording. I think that our, I believe that our intention from the board and from the administration is that we do not want to take away from spring break, although there may be a situation where we're, that's our best option or our only option. So I think that the wording at the bottom of there doesn't necessarily... It seems to indicate that our first reaction would be if we needed more days to take it away. So just for clarification to the public, what it says is, "Calendar includes five snow days. If additional days are required, they typically will be taken from spring break starting April 6 and going backwards." And then it talks about if not used. But particularly, my concern is that it seems like typically will be taken from there. That's not really what our intention, I think, would be. So I had made a suggestion that we change that to say, "If additional days are required or snow days are unused, they'll be taken back or taken or added back at the board's discretion, although the board typically avoids changes to spring break. If required, additional days might include spring break starting April 6 and going backward."
So my only, and I agree with everything you've put forward, is will that cause the calendar to be more than one page?
Well, it's already one page.
I hate to have it...
It's already more than one page.
Well...
Isn't it?
Actually, it's one.
Uh, no, that's actually just the way this is laid out. For some reason, it laid out landscape.
Yeah, it comes up in some people's browsers.
I'm fine with tweaking it however we want, just making sure. To me, it reads that if we need more days, where our first go-to is going to be pulling away from spring break. And we've made it pretty clear to our faculty that we want them to be able to take that time off and not worry about getting docked pay if there's any necessity to come back or anything, so is that...
I think the word, I think the word, and you did suggest that word typically, and I agree with you. I think that word is really, really does describe what's the norm. The norm would be, first of all, this is not a normal year if you had it. It would be an abnormal year of snow days. But the norm would be to take it from there. Now, the reason why I want to say definitely take it from there is because if you had a strange year where by, you know, Thanksgiving, you've already had four snow days, you might need to take them from somewhere else because if you take them all from there, you don't have anywhere else to go. Do you see what I mean? So I'm okay if we want to tweak it a little bit, but I think, to me, this is, this means what I would like it to say. The wording that it says means exactly how I would handle it.
So, but if we had that typical crazy year where we've had it in the past, where we had October and November, snow days for unusual storms, wouldn't we look to probably take it away from like President's Weekend or something first to avoid a change to spring break?
Yeah, because we would need the spring break days for other snow days. See what I mean?
But if we had one, if we had one day we had to take back and we knew that early in the year because it's going to be unusual year if you have to do this, then we would probably, I...
Yeah, you might do that. You might, you might actually...
I was going to say, in recent history...
Or in December now.
We took away the teachers' convention weekend. We took away the February break. I mean, we took back all sorts of...
You're sure about teachers?
Oh, yes, the teachers came to us.
Same.
Oh, yeah, door's same. Everybody did that. You actually canceled it.
We had, I've heard of districts going on Saturdays to avoid spring break. So, I mean, I think the word typically, I mean, it reads to me, if I'm just reading this, it looks to me like...
That's going to be our first.
Don't plan spring break because there's a good, there's a chance that they're going to start pulling away from it, which is, I thought not what our intention was, was not to try to take a day away from spring break if possible. There may be a chance that if you have an early March snowstorm and you have no more days, the only thing you have is spring break and Memorial Day weekend.
And extend in the year.
Yeah, or extend the years. You get three options right there.
I guess his point is, it just seems to be telegraphing that we're going to do spring break first. That's our first choice, and it's not necessarily our first choice.
I mean, I would just, even if we just said, "If additional days are required, they may be taken from spring break starting with April 6," then to me, even just saying "may" instead of typically, gives you the option that they might. I mean, it's a heads up.
So we could say they may, if, so this wording would work for me, that if additional days are required, they may be taken from spring break or a combination of other possibilities.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Is that, is that the exact wording you guys like? Because I would like to pass this tonight.
Well, can we approve the calendar without the wording at the bottom?
Then you have to come back.
Let's just approve it.
Yeah, let's just get the wording done.
Let's get it...
I'm fine with anything that doesn't say that we're only going to take it away from spring break.
Additional days are required, they may be taken from spring break. May, right?
Yep.
Right.
Other possibilities will be considered.
Perfect.
Is that good?
Yep.
How about other possibilities may be considered? That probably should be...
Yep.
Other possibilities may be considered. I'll make the change before I post it, although I'd like to approve it anyway.
Yep, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Is everybody, is everybody okay with that language?
I am.
Okay, and we have just the one workshop expense for January 30.
Oh, who seconded that?
Oh, that was Mr. Cass.
He would need to say...
Yeah, Donna, you okay with that, should we?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, anything else?
I don't think so. Did we, did we get the, did we get the reading logs from the Riverview Library and the Lakeview Library?
Yes.
Yes.
When was this?
Probably with the work session.
And we are going to do the same procedure, meaning they'll go through, it'll be approved by the board, it'll be posted in the Friday folder for time people to come look at it before you discard it.
I know I said that at the last meeting, but I don't remember getting the lists attached at the work session meeting, and they aren't attached.
That's the right, well, it was attached to the, this 11-14.
So they were attached to the last?
Yeah, the work session.
Yeah, on the shared site, it's the last, second to last document.
Well, I wonder if it's not on the email. That's why I didn't...
It wasn't on this email, it was on the last email.
It was on the last email.
Yeah, I have it.
Riverview reading log is there, and Lakeview library, they called library discard.
Oh, okay, I see him. Thank you.
But we will go through the same process. We'll, once the board approves it, it'll be posted in the Friday folder. Nothing, everything will be sent after that. We'll allow the public to come in and peruse and see if they want to take it. After that, they'll be sent to the book barn at St. Clair, so they typically take everything.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of these, I know, I think we talked about this last meeting, a lot of these, when they say video, are actually VHS tapes, so...
If it says video, it's VHS.
So you can flush out your VHS library?
Yeah.
The Lakeview one is pretty small, about the Riverview one is bigger.
Okay, very good. If everyone is okay, I'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna? Mr. Moore?
Yes, but no on 2 and 3.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to policy. As a change of pace, I'll move this one if there are no objections. I would like to move item 1, which is the revision to our pupil transportation policy 8600.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I think we, well, I know we talked about it at the work meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the couple of small changes we had. I'm assuming at this point, we're all okay?
There's really one line.
Yeah, it was just that one.
This is the one where you change like three words, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, this is it. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, on to finance. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to take us through that?
Here, give me your hand. If there's no objection, I'd like to move items 1 through 8 as a block under the finance section, letter D. Those items include the checklists, the auditor's financial auto-report from last, the 15, 16, for the year ending June 30, and their corrective action plan for the audit recommendation, the one finding. Also, number 4, some discarded items, listing on the agenda. Number 5 is evaluations to be done through St. Clair as needed. Number 6 is a Dendel Rotary donation of 177 dictionaries. Seven, $1,500 for gracious participation of New Jersey Leaders to Leaders Program. And last, $10,050 to St. Mary's for security items, intercom, chain link gates, and aluminum counter shutter with preparated curtain and manual operation.
I'll second.
So the items 6, 7, and 8 in bold are the addition, the new ones, right, from the work meeting?
Yes. 6, 177 dictionaries was presented in the early fall, but I never got it on the agenda.
And I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but I just want to call out again, Damaris and everyone is at work in the administrative office for the, what I think, and I think objectively was an excellent review by the auditor. Thank you very much for that and all that work.
We should also clarify number 8. Number 8 is another one of the systems where the money has to funnel through the township schools, the public schools, to go to St. Mary's. This is not money coming from Dendel taxpayers, it's money from the state of New Jersey that we cannot use legally. It has to go to your non-public schools.
And we just act as a conduit, basically, for that money to move.
I had a couple of comments. I appreciate the email on the check replacements, it was one of the questions I had. It's not going to be a replacement check. I had a printing account issue.
David, we'll have a little printing issue. The system, unfortunately, doesn't import the new, the total, the total of the money.
I'll wait a second. The other thing, I did have time to call, but I just went through some of the, I saw a work group reimbursement of $100. I mean, I don't even comment on it. I don't know if that was something that was purchased, a piece of equipment, or is it actually somebody's work group that we had reimbursed?
We need to hear the maintenance staff, who worked with us up to $100, and it was small. Every year. As I said, it's part of the contract. Just to find you know, and what this is, we only have two, three staffs.
Yeah, okay, that's sharp.
Correct.
Okay.
And just for community clarification, we didn't talk about number 8 yet, did we?
Yes.
We did, yeah. Talking about the fact that it just passes through?
Right.
Yes, Steve mentioned it, okay. Just want to make sure, was it something else you wanted to...
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure people heard.
I got a question about, on the bills list, page 2. It's, let's see here, check number 1588 appears to have, all it says is Amazon. Is that, is that stuff we're buying?
Is that November's or October's?
Give me the check number again, Mr. Moore.
15... 1588.
Yeah, that's, that's November.
Those are November checklist, and those are supplies for the preschools.
Yep.
Thank you, Riverview and Valley View.
Yeah, I asked that same question. I think it was music supplies, you said, social studies, master, view master, virtual reality, some other supplies.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except I need to abstain on check 1618 on the bills list.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds. Mr. Cass, would you care to walk, take us through these?
All right, and while there are no objections, I'm going to... All right, and, uh, there are no objections, I'm going to move one and three separately, as, um, probably some, well, detailed discussion on number two, so I'm going to move number one and three separately.
I'll second that.
Okay, so on one and three, any questions or comments?
I, I'm going to, we, this is, um, repeated what we've done prior years, and it's really great that we can help out. You know, we talk about shared services with the town, that we're, uh, yeah, once again, making Valley School available for the, uh, Denver Recreation Parks, summer camp activities. It's, uh, a good program that they do, we've also developed a lot of leadership with our students, as they matriculate through the programs, and, uh, the consters.
Have you noticed it is an extra week this year? They asked for, they asked if we'd do it an extra week. I asked our people internally, everybody said, "Okay," so we gave them the green light to go ahead.
It goes later into August?
Yeah, normally it goes to, like, August 4th. This, they wanted an extra week because there was call from the, from the populace, they wanted, they wanted to go a little bit longer, so we gave them another week.
I think I might have been one of those people.
You asked?
Well, I did, I mean, later in the, yeah, there's always a gap. You know, that, that August time period's rough.
That's about a month. This way, you know, I guess parents have to deal with, like, three weeks.
Yeah.
Where, one of the possibilities on the, expanding the calendar, assuming we have a ludicrous number of snow days, is to make, is to add on days at the end of the year, correct?
Correct.
Uh, is there something in the agreement we have with them, if there, if we do have to do that? Because I see that this, June 24th is the Monday after we, after school lets out, correct? Is it, do we have a, do we have something, something to account for that, or is, I mean, I'm assuming most of the people who are going to be in, most of the kids are going to be in that, are going to be in school if we happen to have school go longer?
Right. Um, we have the shared services agreement that this was working on, we don't have a separate lease or anything like that for this. So, yeah, I mean, the, our kids are the kids that are to be in, it's our kids who'll be in school. Mostly, they'd be half-days though, so they may want to do it after school, some other kind of program after school, so that they, you know, after the half-day, so we'd probably work with them on that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, we are voting on one and three. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna? Mr. Lour?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Cass, would you care?
I now move motion number two, that the board approves the proposal for a redistricting study from Ross Haber Associates for cost, we have an office.
I'll second. Okay. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Um, I, I know we talked about this, um, in both IMP and Ops Committee, I know I sat in on both of those meetings, and I, I believe, walking out of those meetings, both sets of committees had talked about waiting until we completed the strategic planning to determine, um, some direction that we hopefully will get out of that, to move forward with that. So that's the first concern I have with it. The second concern is, and I know Mr. Forte and I had some discussion, um, or email discussion back and forth today about it, the proposal does not talk anything about a five-year, it only talks about our current enrollment. Um, so, until we have a revised proposal that lays out something in more detail about how they plan on figuring out the next five years, um, and, and even at that, I would assume they would use the births, and I understand, sitting through two demographic studies in this district, that live births are often, you know, considered, when you look at demographic studies, however, we're literally going to be talking about a 10-block radius, right? We're not going to drastically change the line, but it can move. I can't imagine that, um, and, and often on those demographic studies, they talk about, yes, births, you're going to have people that are going to move out of the town, into the town, but usually it's fairly equal. Um, I can't imagine that that same philosophy would hold true for, if you took a much smaller sample size, meaning only a 10-block radius of the town, that you'd have the same amount of people moving in and out. Um, that's one of my concerns. The other thing is, talking about new developments, we have no idea anything about where they're going to be. There's not one new development that's been approved by the planning board or anybody within the town, so I don't know what benefit in adding them in would be, because you could actually be planning for something that never happens. So, I, I've got a lot of concerns on, on that proposal at this point. It may be something, I think, um, I would support in the future, but at this point, based upon those concerns, um, I have, I have a lot of issues with, moving forward with it right now.
Okay, so, this came from, starting, really came from academics, conversations with academic, about, related to academics with Sandy, and trying to figure out a way that we could, without, without causing, without, with causing it the least amount of public distress, come up with a way to move a few kids from, uh, Lakeview to Riverview, without, without changing it every year, coming up with as best of a, a best, the best chance we have for it to last for five years. Um, I, I did ask Ross to send me a little update, he did, I forwarded it to you, it might not have gotten to it yet, but he did, he does, he, we did that verbally, and he did, he did talk about, um, how he would, it does, it will be something that he feels will be pretty valid for five years. Right now, we're at the point where there's, where the class sizes at Lakeview are, are approaching the maximum numbers, and some of the ones at Riverview are substantially lower. And I do understand the whole idea of waiting for strategic plan, and that, that is definitely an option. The thing is, Sandy and I sat down and felt like, if we don't, if we don't try to do this now, first of all, we won't be able to do it for this, next year, in, uh, 17, 18, due to the fact that, you know, the kindergarten registration comes up. I really would rather, I think, to reduce public, you know, distress on a topic like this, I would rather inform the public at registration, rather than either telling them they may go to Lakeview, and then they may go to Riverview, or just telling them, "We don't know where you're going yet." So that was really why we wanted to push it. I'm, I'm totally okay if the board is not happy with this, of putting it off a year. I do feel strongly that we need to do this some, someday, somewhere, move that line a little bit to try to help move those kids over. Um, today on the phone, because I know there was a lot of, you know, discussion about this, and I took, I spoke with Dino a little bit, and I explained to him how we used to do it in my, in one of the districts I worked in previously, and it really isn't something I would like to do here, but we could do. It's just, it will cause public distress, and that is, when kids register for kindergarten, if you live in between Route 46 and Lakeview, we would not inform them what school they're going to yet. Now, that could change every year, based on, you know, like, you know, now it's, we don't need the kid from the street, we need the kid from that street. So you could have kids, like, living next door, on the same street, going to different schools, and with the proposal that Sandy and I felt strongly about, this would happen now, but it would phase out eventually. Meaning, like, for, for the first year, yeah, you could have a person living right next door to each other, that go to different schools, but after the fifth year, sixth year, really, that would be down to a minimum. There's still some cases, because kids cross school. Um, and I do understand that, you know, in some of the plans of, that may come up in the strategic planning process, the, the demographic, I mean, the, uh, redistricting study isn't as valuable, but even the one that we talked about, it's back looking again at the, at the grade level concept, even that one would still, it still would apply, because if we had to do that shared three, some of this redistricting would apply to that, because we still have the bubble, it wasn't matter if it's kindergarten or third, we have them in all the spots, not a bubble, we have discrepancy in most of the grades. Um, so that, that was where it came from, of why I thought we should do it now. But again, if, if there's, if there's real distaste for this at this moment, and, and everybody feels like it's just not, uh, what, what's the direction we want to go, I don't mind pulling it off, I just want everybody to understand that, you know, we are getting to the point where the, the class sizes are growing in one and not growing in the other. That was, that, it really, I want everybody to understand, this came from academics. We shouldn't have even put this on IMP, because it really came from Sandy, and maybe Sandy could even jump in a little bit.
Sure. Uh, this conversation really happened, um, this is my fourth year here, and I've observed the first two years, that one, Lakeview is growing more than Riverview is growing, and it's not enough to actually reduce class sections, however, the class sizes are very different, and that means a different experience, it can mean a very different experience, if you have 24 students in one class, at one school, and 16 in the same grade in another school. But it's not enough to cut a class, we don't have enough students to actually cut a whole section. Um, I brought it to Steve when he started a year ago, that, looking long-term, we need some solutions, and one of them is redistricting, one of them is where, we have outgrown the buildings. You know, physically, our numbers of students have changed, but the number of programs have grown, so we just don't have enough space to house all of the programs that we have, currently have, nor do we have enough general, uh, ed classrooms to fit all the students in Lakeview versus Riverview. So the question came up was, if we're growing in one school and not the other, then we need to relook at where the line is, because our students are moving in at a much faster rate in the Lake, in Lakeview school. So we're getting about three new students to every one student at Riverview, which is just expanding that side, and we really need to look, we need to take a look at the line. Because if we're, if this is a trend, is continuing, it's, it's been this way for the four years I've been here, that every year, we're getting more students in one and not the other, that we need to find some relief, uh, at this point, because we are, we're at 24 and 25 in our fourth and fifth grade classes, which, go ahead.
So, no, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure, that's right.
So, two things. First of all, the line right now is Route 46, correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
If you went any further across 46, you were literally going to take kids that could walk across the street and send them to Lakeview. So, I'm not sure what else we're going to do with that line, outside of literally making it on the other side of Riverview? I mean?
Oh, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
No, it's the other way.
We go the other way.
We want those students to come to Riverview.
Okay, I got you, I got you. So, the other question is, that, yes, when I look at the current class sizes, and I'm looking at them here, in front of me, they vary every single class. So, yes, we point out that the fourth has 16 in Riverview and 24 at Lakeview. That's a big variance, totally agree. But then we see other ones that are really close. First graces, first grade is 16.6 and 19, I mean, that's really close. So, outside of changing this line every year?
There's a little difference in first grade, Sandy can jump in on that.
But, I mean, so, second grade's the same way, third grade's the same way.
They're, they're close.
They're, I mean, every, you're going to have to change the line every year per class, right?
We need, that's two or three students for every class, so there's five sections there, more, so you have like 15 more. We really, that's what we need, is, uh, the line doesn't need to be miles apart, but we need to move it over, in that we get a handful of kids over.
In each?
Yeah, in every grade, I mean.
Five to six kids starting kindergarten.
It needs to be, right. It doesn't need to be that we have to pull in huge housing developments.
But the problem is, if you move the line too far, you're actually going to get the opposite effect. So, I guess?
Moving too many?
Yeah, you're going to have, moving too many, because we have classes that are 22 and 20, or 21 and 22, average per class. So, my point being that, unless you move the line every single year, which we don't want to do, because we know the dramatic effect that could have on families and neighborhoods and kids that, like you said, right next door, they go to another school, I mean, I, I have, so, I totally understand these issues, I agree with, we have to do something. My concern with this exact proposal is that it was added to the agenda on Friday, so the first time I thought we were going to, the first time we even knew we were going to vote on it was Friday. I don't feel like there's enough in the proposal for me to understand how they're going to do it. I mean, for, for him to mention about availability of space, that actually gets me angry, because he did a demographic study in this town, and said nothing about, he said everything was great, he said nothing about anything was wrong. And then all of a sudden, I get, the administration come to us and say, "We've got substandard space."
Wait, the, the, he, he did mention there a bunch of things about space, and that the fact that we're growing.
That was a year ago, we said nothing about it in a year.
And the demographic report said that.
I agree with absolutely everything Mike said tonight. I'm upset that I sat in a committee where we discussed your whole presentation, and the proposal, and clearly said, "We didn't want to move forward with anything until this is presented to the strategic planning committees." I even asked, "Which meeting of the strategic planning would be presented at?" And we discussed the timelines for implementation right in the Instruction and Program Committee, and said that we knew that by letting us have this discussion with the community first, we knew it pushed off our timelines. So, I don't take that as an answer, because we specifically discussed those points, at least in Instruction and Program. Um, secondly, I agree with the stuff that Mike just said about the demographic study, you know, with Ross Haber. As everyone, I'm sure, with any kind of memory knows, I didn't agree with us bringing him in the last time. He was supposed to come in, look at our buildings, look at room usage, look at everything. I'm not spending another $3,000 for him to arbitrarily draw a line for us. In my 10 years on the board, we have moved that line without paying someone $3,000 to tell us where to move the line. It's, can't be that complicated. It has been a problem where we had to shift kids over to Riverview, and I think it's a horrible thing that keeps happening into the same area in town, that we keep moving the line back and forth, but you don't need somebody to come in and tell us where to move the line, if we're going to hit that same area again. If you're going to have him pick out a busload of kids from, you know, all the way on the far side of Lakeview, and you're going to bust them over to Riverview, that's different, that I understand takes a lot of planning, but you know which kids are in which homes we bust them right now. You're talking about moving kids. So, I'm, I understand why educationally we want to do this, and we have worked to balance class sizes in the past between the schools, and it has happened on kindergarten registration day, where we say to the parents, "You can go to Lakeview and sit in a class at 25, you can, you know, choose to have your kids go to Riverview and be in the smaller class sizes," and you work with the families. I don't understand, I don't, I, I will not support this.
Is, I just want to clarify, the question is not, is a question about the demographic study, but not about the, uh, continuing the discussion on need for balance between the schools?
Yeah, but I think, I, I have faith in my administrators, I believe you guys can figure out, as the kids register, where you need to, because you're not going to take a third grader out of Lakeview and move them over to Riverview, correct? Even if Ross Haber suggests it. We're not going to do it. So it's, as they register, we're going to say, we're going to look at the population and say, and I personally, Steve, to your, you don't want to do it here, I would have no problem, as a board member, supporting, telling parents, in this four-block radius, it'll be on a year-by-year basis to have your child have a more equitable education. I, as a board member, would support that. I don't know, I mean, we've done that to that part of the community, and I'd love to say, "No, I want to draw the line in the sand and never do this again," but I agree that it's not all right to have kids sitting in class sizes of 24 versus 16.
And, and just for clarification, Dr. Coles, from my perspective, this is absolutely not about looking at future, how we balance the schools, the propos, different ideas to do that, absolutely not. It's really just about right now, and, and I'm not saying that in the future I may not support a redistricting study, but the way I see that study, the proposal that's in front of me right now, to vote on today, lists nothing about the next five years, nor does this description on email that I'm seeing in front of me say anything about how he's going to do that, which I'd like to really understand how he's going to do that. So that's my concern, in addition to the fact that we talked about not doing it until, not spending $3,000, if, you know, I mean, Steve, I know you're saying now that all four of those proposals that we had talked about in committee say, but two of them were the, so, I mean, we've got a lot of things up in the, up in the air here, I, in my opinion, it's best to table it, but that's, I'm one of seven, so.
Well, Mariana raises an interesting point, and it's something you and I talked about, I think briefly, we never really kind of drilled down to it. During registration, you could offer, you could offer people the choice.
Yeah, you can offer them.
And it's, and in, in a way, it's kind of a stark choice, like she said, you know, could, you, your kid could sit in a class at 24, or they could go to Riverview, and it could be a class at 18, 19, 20, and it could, you know, and you're talking.
I don't think I would want to frame it that.
Well, I, I understand.
It's not necessarily going to be that.
Well, no, but, but the point, but, but in realistic terms, it could be that. Um, but you're talking about moving, what, five or six kids possibly?
Yeah, five or six kids a year over the next, five to six, you know, over the next six years.
I don't see that as necessarily a hard discussion to have.
And I know that we've had that, I know that our administrators have had that discussion with parents before, in my time on the board. They absolutely have, I think, um, I'm drawing a blank. Catherine, I think Mrs. Mosack did that for us when she was our superintendent. I know we had kids...
I mean, you have families that can see Riverview School, but right now are arbitrarily going to Lakeview, right? So if that was my choice, I would seriously, I would give that some serious thought. Why not?
Yeah, I didn't know we had kids who could see Riverview.
You can see Riverview from the other side of 46.
They live by Duncan Dora.
Yeah.
Right there.
But the concern then becomes there, it is a decision because at the end of the day, if Johnny next door is going to Lakeview, and Bobby on the other side, you know, I mean, it's like in my neighborhood, if it was, if it was me in my neighborhood, just for an example, I've got kids on both sides of me and neighbors around the corner that their kids go to school with my kids and they want to be at school with my kids, so...
But we have that now. We have that in the neighborhood by Gerhardt Shepherd Life. That block is traditionally split, and I think that's where you guys have moved the line before. I know there are families that have gone the other way.
That's a, that's a, actually grandfathering out area where they're going to Riverview, to Lakeview. The new policy we have, which is, it gives me the flexibility to do it, but the problems we're having, obviously, is, the way, the way we set it up was, we were going to see what our numbers are like, say July 1st, these are the numbers. And then it gives us the flexibility when kids move in to go to a different school. Problem was, those kids lived south of Lakeview. So it was really, you know, obviously, we're not going to send a kid drive past Lakeview to go to Riverview. So, that method didn't really work as well as I hoped. So the only other method would be, other than doing this, if we decide we don't want to do this, which is totally fine, the other, the only other method we would have right now would be to really just inform the parents when they, when they register that you'll be informed of which school they go to. And we'll have geographics, geographically, we probably wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't send somebody that go, that lives maybe like the farthest, the furthest south part of Indian Lake, but we might send kids that live on the north side of Indian Lake to Riverview. We could do that, and maybe, maybe everybody would be totally fine with it. I just, I've lived through that. It causes some, you know, distress among parents and families. We actually, interestingly, that's happened today. We got a call, I got a call today from a parent that was asking what school my kid would go to if I live at the blinking light. So it was like, it just so happened today.
Well, today, it's Lakeview.
All right. This end of the table's been fairly loud. What do you guys think?
You start the leadership academy with the people that we're developing.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this could be a internal project for those type of people there. I mean, I just got a few days now, you've got transportation system which shows every kid on every corner. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great system, so you have a little busing information there, and then you add your own data bases, but, you know, a project for them in conjunction with strategic planning, because you certainly want to hear input from the parents. And let them come up a couple of, you know, what scenarios of where you would, I see the line is, you've got the authority now, but it's got to be, that's set in concrete, it's got to be floating and moving around periodically because you just have to make adjustments as people move into town, people leave town. But I thought that'd be a good idea, have them do it. There's a career development aspect to the leadership academy, and also, you know, you don't have to go outside. These people go to schools the best. The other thing is that we mentioned is, this is not only the, the size of the classes is certainly one issue, but then you have what we call inadequate space. You know, you have music being done on the, on the stage, which nobody's ever complained about to me, but it's not a musical, it's a stage, multi-purpose area. And then we have some of the special education therapies and things that go on in spaces that are really not made for that. I remember in Riverview, geez, for the longest time there, you had physical therapy done on the hallway there. You had a curtain up, and that just wasn't a good situation, but it was the only situation that you could find, you know, a place to do it. So, I just think the people in-house and in the schools that know the spaces, you know, let them come up with a couple of recommendations as we get into the strategic planning. Some of them want to hear from the parents how they feel about it, too. I just think that, you know, I discussed with some colleagues on the board, is one thing would be really on top of you with the parents, is you have, you know, one kid at Lakeview, one kid at Riverview, you want to keep the families going to the same school. Especially, so many parents work today, you have childcare issues, so you don't want to go to kids come up to Lakeview and then have a big river view and fight the traffic around town and all that. So, it's just a lot of different parts that do sound simple, but it's not.
Well, I think, yeah, you're right. If we did what I just said, where you inform people later of where they're going to school, you would take into account geography, you would take into account programming, if a kid needs a certain program, and you would take into account the student. So you wouldn't move, you wouldn't move a child, an incoming kindergarten, if he had a sibling already in the other school. So, yeah, I agree with that. And look, obviously, obviously, I must not have done as good of a job explaining, and I can take all the blame for that because two people as a group felt like, you know what, sometimes I think I'm thinking something, but don't say it. And Sandy and I both talked about it after. I said, "You know what, if we're going to do this, we got to put it on now." Because, you know, I think it would be really bad to do this after registration, like if we're going to do this. So, I apologize for not being clear in the meeting, and I think, again, I was probably thinking one thing and saying something else. So I have no problem not doing this. It's, it's okay. We'll figure out another way of doing it.
Yeah, I want to disagree with you. I think the explanation, I think it's a very complicated process. I mean, just, you talk about it, it sounds pretty simple, then after the committee meeting, you start thinking about all these things. It's just a lot of moving parts, and just a lot of issues from an individual family standpoint, as well as the physical structure of the schools. So, you know, it's a work process. I think we started off okay, you know, as we vetted it, there was just a lot of open ends to it before you come to a conclusion. And right now, it's a good thing we're having this strategic plan coming up in January, so I think, see what the parents feel, you know, about it. And then I just think that leadership, let the people here in the district do this, you know, a special, a special project. You're dealing with all the different parts here, especially the inadequate space for special ed, inadequate space for the extracurricular, you know, the things that are done, you know, music and things like that, as well as the class sizes. I mean, that's another thing, too. Now, I don't have a problem on a short-term basis, as people, I mean, start registering kids for the upcoming school year, or they move into the district, you got to place them in a school. You know, or something out, they wanted to go to Riverview. I think that helps the overall situation on a, on a short-term basis. I don't have a problem with that.
But I think I'd like to see how he does the study, because at the end of the day, I don't think we have the data to predict the next five years in this, in our district. I agree with that. We do not have that data. I'd like to understand what data he's using to do that, because there's a whole lot of variables that can change. So, the town can, the planning board and the town can approve a development, or not approve a development, right? So, that could shift things already. We're already seeing Essling Lake, we've got students coming out of Essling Lake, I believe you had told us, right? Yeah. So, but, but that's, I mean, that has an effect on that, right? And I'd like to understand how he's doing it, because we have data for our current students. Our current students are not the, our current students are already set. We can't, we're not going to move them. And we can look on a year-by-year basis as we do it, but I'd really be, I mean, two things. Number one, the initial proposal, the initial presentation you gave us said two out of four. So, I was saying, listen, if 50% of the time, we're not going to need this $3,000, this is a waste of money, then I don't want to do it. Now you're telling me four are four. Okay, so that changes my opinion to a certain extent. My other thing is, is the proposal we currently have does not say five years, so I can't approve based upon this piece of paper. And third of all, I'd like to see exactly how he plans on doing this, because saying you're going to do it and explaining to me how you're going to do it, because if he's just going to guess, we can guess, too. And I'm guessing he has a better scientific explanation, but I'd like to understand it.
I mean, here's what I think we should do, if everybody's okay. We table this, and the next thing I do is, we start looking at, where would the line be that we, not that we're going to make a definite line, but we're going to tell these people who live between 46 and this line, "We don't know where you're going yet." Like, obviously, I'm not going to tell people who live way out on, like, on Franklin, like, almost towards Lakeview. We're not going to tell them, "We don't know where you're going." I mean, I don't think we should. It seems silly, because we know they're going to Lakeview. But wherever that, that group is, just say it's the blinking light. Please, everybody, this is just an example. The blinking light. Say it's the blinking light. Now we say, "Anybody between 46 and the blinking light, we are not going to tell you where you're going to school yet. We will tell you, but not yet. You're going to go to either Riverview or Lakeview." So, and then, and then what we do is, if that doesn't really work, if it causes issues and it's not, it's not effective, I'll have Russ Haber come in here, give you a more detailed explanation, and then actually present to you what exactly he would do, and then answer your questions.
That's fair.
But for now, we just, we try it the other way.
The other way you can do it, by the way, I'm thinking historically, you could take our current students and figure out where that optimal line is now, based upon K through five, right? Because that may give you a good indicator, because, yeah, I mean, that may...
Or even five years. Like, if we took the last five years.
Yeah, sure.
And took that as an average, you could use that maybe...
Because I think you're going to see something very interesting, because I think that line, you're never going to get a perfect line.
I agree.
I think you're still going to have some variation, and we've done pretty well the last couple of years. That one bubble, four and five, were bubbles, and I don't know what you could have done besides for change the line that year, and that's not something I think we want to do.
The problem is the K1. And also, I have to use Ross's data, shows that there's not going to be an increase. So, it will, it should still continue to be off, meaning Lakeview, because, and I know you pointed out one, if you, one, the problem with one, the reason why one is an anomaly, is because we have one class of 10 kids in there for what we did our, what do we call it again?
Our transitional first grade? It's 12, 12 kids.
So, if we're using K1 as a guide, and then using his, his demographic report, we could assume, again, that the numbers in K1 should be similar to what comes in the incoming K, which is definitely out of, out of kilter, right? I mean, you see, it's, it's got some room, and we could, we could make some changes there. And again, you're talking five kids. Five kids a year, just move their, you know, five kids from Lakeview to Riverview each year for a total of 60, 30 kids, and just balance them out a little bit.
Well, and according to his demographic study, Riverview might have one open classroom beginning in '17, '18 school year.
Next year, correct.
We do. Because of that bubble class.
Because there's a bubble going through.
So that obviously could change the line, too, because now you can push more kids in kindergarten towards Riverview.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an extra class, it's reducing the extra class, meaning all the grades have three, except one has four.
Fifth grade.
So, it would just be, it would just continue to have three. And then, we would allow, we would allow, you know, obviously, we'd have, maybe the music teacher would take a room instead of having to be, you know, in the auditorium, in the cafeteria.
You could, couldn't you also push an extra section of K towards Riverview?
A whole extra section, but then, but then you'd have to bubble it out, I guess. Because they don't have room for four in each grade. There'll never be four.
But that classroom's always going to be open, so if you move that line, that could always be an extra K section that goes there.
Yeah, but then it's an extra first grade section, an extra second grade section, then an extra third grade section. So then you need three rooms.
Right. The sizes will never allow us to be four and four. Four and four would be great. But now, the best we're going to get is five and three.
That's the goal. And Sandy and I have probably spoken about this for a year. The goal would be having five and three.
Because he mentions nothing in here about substandard space, Steve, just so you know. I mean, I'm reading the entire thing.
He doesn't say the word, but I think he says something about, you know, that we need to, I can look through it again.
He says fully occupied, he says Riverview's going to have an extra classroom. I mean, there's nothing in here that he ever explained. That's why I'm kind of upset that we're going to use him again, because he came in and said nothing to us about that, what you guys are bringing to us. So, our in-house folks, you, are bringing to us something as a problem that a year ago, we had, not even a year ago, we had a demographer, actually, it was a year ago, November of last year. He stood in front of us and didn't say anything about, "Hey, listen, I've got these classrooms, you've got a closet at Lakeview where you're teaching music." That is ridiculous at my room utilization study. I don't remember him saying anything like that. If he did, he certainly didn't make it aware that it was such a big problem that you guys have brought to us, that, so, that's why I guess I'm frustrated, that it's the same person who I feel like didn't bring it to us before, and now we're asking him to do it again.
Was it the $3,000? I mean, just, you know. Standard, right? There were mistakes in his report. I just remember...
And his proposal has typed books.
No, because we've used other demographers in the past.
I don't think you guys liked the other demographer either. I know that. I remember, I remember from, I was at the meeting when you guys had the presentation.
Do you want to table the resolution? What do you want to do?
I would like to rather table it. I think at this moment, all the things we've talked about, that I mean, draw the motion at this point in time, we could, just to get more information, we could always do the motion.
I am fine with that.
I have a, I'm fine with that, too, but I have a question. Since Don brought up at length the presentation that Steve presented to both sets of committees, is now a time to make a comment on that?
Your presentation?
It's a Buildings and Grounds, I guess, presentation, I mean, that has educational impact. And I just would like to say for the record, because when I read it again, when it was attached, when I read about Valley View Middle School, and that it says in here that, "At this time, Valley View Middle School has sufficient space for the student and staff needs." I mean, and maybe it's just because I've sat on the board table too long, and I said it in committee, sort of before you started talking, and then I let you do your whole presentation, and we never really came back to it, but it is my understanding, and then I'd like to have it come back to curriculum so that I could change my understanding, that the schedule in this building, where we're sitting right now, is driven by the size of the room we're in right now. It has educational impact on the students how we can deliver lunch. So I don't know how, and gym, but it's because we have to have lunch and a space for recess in the winter, in the, in the bad season indoors. So it's all about lunch and recess, and that should not be the driving factor for a schedule educationally, which is why I don't know how we can say, when you, we present to the community, "Valley View's great. It's got some space." It doesn't.
Even it doesn't say that, though. It says they're not, there's nothing conducted in substandard space, things like that.
I know, but then your third bullet is, "At this time, Valley View School has sufficient space for the student and staff needs." But it doesn't.
Right, but it's, it's focusing on things like using trailers, using closets, dual rooms.
I understand that, but if we go out to the community in a presentation of our facilities, I would hate to have somebody walk away with the fact that they think that there isn't space constraining how we deliver education in this school.
I guess what you're saying, too, is if we had a bigger cafeteria and/or gym, and I don't, you know this better than I do, I don't know about this issue, but that we could deliver a better educational environment for the students here.
Well, you could deliver a better schedule, possibly.
Which would be educationally beneficial.
Right. So I just, I think for the board to understand it, which is why I'd like to bring it up now, not just in the small committee, for the newer board members on here, I just, I'm not sure when you read this, you come away with a takeaway that we are actually impacting education because of this space. education because of this space. That's all I'd like to say. Just go on the record and if I'm wrong, then come and explain to me how it's not impacting the schedule.
I definitely agree that it's not perfect. There's definitely areas, like this is a very small room for a 600-student middle school to have lunch. I agree with you. I think I was more pointing out the more problematic areas that the district has, but I agree with your point.
If we're going to go out to the community and talk about drastic things like possibly putting on additions or redistricting or grade-level schools, I think they should have a full understanding of all the, all the things that you actually deal with as administrators when you try and figure out how to deliver the best education to students. I mean, we're talking about, you know, when we just talked about the kindergarten class size and everything, that it's educationally why you're bringing it to us, but I just think that should be, you know, noted for the board at large and for the community at large.
This power, this PowerPoint was actually an internal document for now.
No, I know it is, but I just, that's why I said, is this the time for me to say that?
And I don't think this is going to be the, this is not going to be the public presentation due to the fact that at the, at the state of the district address, it'll be-
It'll be too long to go through this. I understand that.
Right, right. And you can't just focus on that, but yeah. But I, I agree with you. I, this building definitely has limitations. It's just not the worst ones in the district.
No, it's not, but I mean, it's also not one that could be fixed, which was the problem we wrestled with for a very long time as a board. We couldn't fix the problems of this school by dropping those two trailers because it didn't give us a large space to put kids in for lunch and recess.
Right.
I mean, the other schools, you could solve by dropping a few classrooms. This building, you couldn't solve its issues. Okay, that's all I wanted to add to the board's statement.
All right, so are we going to have a motion to table?
It's already been moved, so.
It's been moved. Yeah, we moved it already, so.
So we can table it?
All right. So we table it? Okay.
So now we move to transportation.
I can withdraw before it goes up.
Correct, after it's up, we have to.
Well, Don said he was-
Don moved it.
Don has to table, Don, you're going to table it then.
Oh, he can't withdraw it, he can only table it?
No, because Steve can withdraw it because it's been moved.
You have to vote on it. All right.
Me too.
The problem is we voted down, well, you can vote it down, it doesn't matter. You can put it back on sometime if everybody's agreed.
We'll abstain, right?
Well, I think, why don't we, why don't we just-
Can we table it?
We can, we can, we can make a motion to table it.
Motion to table it, right.
My feeling is let's make a motion to table it.
I don't see Ross, I would like to just vote for the record, we have the motion, just vote.
Your thoughts?
I'm fine with voting it down.
We could always bring it back if we voted down. We can table it. I'm fine with tableing it.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. DeWona?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Cass?
Okay, moving on to transportation. Mr. Cass, could you take us through these lovely school bus emergencies?
Yeah, I'm going to spare you reading every bus number. So I'm just going to move that, the board accept the school bus emergency evacuational reports as noted for our three district schools.
Any comments or specific questions on these? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWona?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes. Okay, very good. Okay, moving on to good of the cause. I know we received some committee reports this week. I think there might be a couple outstanding or one outstanding. Any, anything anybody would like to report?
Yeah, we haven't had the meeting, but at the next transportation meeting, it's not my idea, Mike's idea, we talked about portable GPS where we could download the bus routes for our substitute drivers that might, probably shouldn't make it a lot easier for somebody that's not used to a particular bus route, to be able to make the correct stops to pick up the kids or the correct stops to drop the kids off and I, you know, what the cost is to have a couple of them laying around, but obviously, you know, we don't have the substitutes driving the buses all the time, but some of the times, maybe a, you know, a bus driver is physically sick or asked to take a day off. So I just think we could make the, the bus a little bit more efficient and reduce the stress for the substitute driver, make sure they, they make the correct stops and they don't have to look at a piece of paper to make sure the kids get dropped off at the right place.
We actually, Steve and I have to do this today, looking to accompany that website that Mike had those GPS available, where we can program those routes. The one that we have currently, according to what we learned, cannot do all the routes. Again, I'm not 100% sure that has accurate information, but we are moving to this.
I can tell you, I think it's a great idea and we're going to keep going and figure out how to get this thing working. It makes a lot of sense.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I went to the Riverview PTA when Mike was out of town. They are knee-deep in planning their spring fundraising events and things are going well there. We also, Riverview had its World Dance, what's the word I'm looking for? It's the residency, residency last week, second year in a row. That was a tremendous program. I know Dr. Cole stopped by and saw some of it. My son loved it. I would treat you to the YouTube video of the Scotland dance, but it was, it was a great program and again, the Foundation of Denville stepped up again this year, I know, with the funding. And I heard a lot of parents talking about how, how impressed they were with what the kids were able to accomplish in just a couple of weeks. So I can't say enough about it. It's a great program.
Okay. Jim?
No, go ahead. What do you have?
Couple of quick things. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at the school board notes digest. We get it in the mail, at least I get it in the mail, from the New Jersey school boards. I just got it, I think, yesterday or today or this weekend. There was something in there, I thought it was pretty cool. 10 Things Every School Board Candidate Should Know Before Taking Office. I actually went through a couple of them today. They're not long videos, but they're on YouTube. When you click on them, they're right on the school board website. So just take a look. I thought it was interesting, just for kind of refreshers for all of us. The other thing I picked up out of there was, I know there's been a lot of discussion, there's a state proposal for superintendent salary cap changes and there's actually a public hearing that's going to be January 11th. It's a Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Morris County Police and Fire Academy, right down on Hanover Avenue. So it's local to us, if you're interested in going down. I believe the Department of Education or the State Board of Education, somebody's going to be there. So should be interesting. And the only other question I had was, Steve, how many students, do we know how many students were getting out of Essling Lake? I know it's kind of a random-
Essling Lake right now has, I believe, nine. No, it's, it's either seven or nine. I know it's one in Valley View and the rest are in River. I think, I think, I think it might be seven in River and, and one in Valley at this particular time.
So if I remember correctly, that's a pilot for another couple of years and I believe there was a conversation with the town that if we had students coming out of there, what was exactly that conversation? Was it more than a certain number or was it any students that we should have a conversation with them and?
Yeah, I started that process with them already. They're talking about it. They're going to talk about it during budget time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You know, I just thought, we had the last pride meeting for the year and they had an interesting thing to throw, to bring back about, you know, they do the spring cleanup every year, pride organizers. Well, they were wondering if we would be interested, the schools, in doing something similar, maybe through the green or through the schools in the fall, like to kind of kick off the school year or some kind of, like a fall cleaning exercise or-
A cleanup of the schools or a cleanup of the town?
A joint effort, what, you know.
That we would kind of help support it through the schools, but it would be something-
Yeah, like using the, the spring, Pride has done a spring cleanup forever with like hot dogs and stuff. It's on the weekend. I mean, maybe it would be a weekend thing, but they were wondering if we'd be open to thinking about it for a similar fall project.
Maybe something our green coordinators could look at?
Yeah. Do you have a contact there? Can you ask them to?
Forward it to me. We could just share service agreement of something that can benefit both of us.
Yeah. So it is interesting, but.
I apologize. I do have two more quick things. First of all, Foundation of Denville, they just completed, I think, getting all their grants from teachers and the schools. I think they've got 15 applications that they're going to review in conjunction with the administration and work on that. So that's really good news. And then I know there was some discussion and Mr. Forte had forwarded the conduct of board meeting policy, which is 0164. I've taken a look at it and I've done some edits that I think we should either change. There's been some change to how we present our agendas, so we should probably reflect that in our policy, as well as a couple of different additions, including a paragraph on work session. So I'm going to forward this to the rest of the board. It's probably a policy that if we're going to review it, should be reviewed by the entire board. It's a bylaw, so I will scan this and send it to everybody for review and then we can start discussing it at upcoming meetings.
Good. You guys are good on the green, follow up on the green, the green team. Hart?
Yeah, I'll wait for the time.
Okay.
I have one thing to share, just as pointing information. At the last meeting, my lovely board president reminded me that I'm the delegate assembly representative from Denville and I registered, probably not in time to have the packet sent to my house, which is probably good because it's well over 100 pages of information, which I won't read all to you tonight. And I thought the board might be interested. Resolution number one that will be voted on by the delegate assembly. And for those of you that don't know what the New Jersey School Board Delegate Assembly is, it's made up of, members from every school district has the right to send a representative to be their delegate down there. And we vote on resolutions. Their policy manual makes ours look like a cakewalk small. And I actually served on it when we went over it. That was really brutal. They're asking, and, and the policies are there to help New Jersey School Board advocate on behalf of us with the legislature. So I'm just going to read you the synopsis, the one paragraph of resolution number one from the Marlboro Board of Education, which is in Monmouth County. They propose that New Jersey School Board Association include additional language, which means they already have a language. Additional language in its manual of positions and policies on education requiring New Jersey School Board Association to support changing the burden of proof in special education disputes so that the burden is not always on the district as required by current law, but is placed on the party bringing the complaint to court. So that's resolution number one, then all board members down at the delegates assembly on December 10th will be voting. Thought you'd all like to know.
And you'll be voting on our behalf?
I will be voting on, yeah.
Yeah.
They're very clear that I'm not to poll the board for a vote.
So you're not voting on behalf?
I'm not really voting on your behalf.
You're voting.
I'm voting.
Period.